The previous meeting was called the order and we're calling it answer roll call.
Mayor Ray Allen.
Here.
Earl.
Here.
Ewing.
Here for the last time.
Pardon. Knox.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. So approved. Cast the office.
One million, six hundred and four thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and forty-one cents in all funds, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and ten cents in the general fund.
Any additions?
There were additions today, it was payroll and you all should have received that sheet.
Bill was read, Rose Ruthon seventeen, day twelve, day one. The doctor's on the motion.
Tom Vicki.
Earl.
Yes.
Knox.
Yes.
Ewing.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Okay, at this time with the guest section, I have Brad Carter. I'll step up to the podium there.
Yes, just questions regarding the electrical billing process change. I don't know what it's titled under, but that's what I understand is being looked at. That concern is that the landlord's credit is, would be a liability for the city possibly using that, is that correct? Trying to understand exactly why the city wants to change the billing. If they're liable for that process.
No, the landowner will, is and will always be responsible for the utility payment.
Right.
In the end. Okay. I guess we had a situation where when we tried to work with a renter, what we're actually trying to do at that point is extend the property owner's credit because you would still be liable for the bill if they did not pay. So our concern is to try to streamline our system. I, I think as far as the renters, they will receive the bill from the landlord. I think that's how we've got it set up. Where we're, we're not chasing down renters to get paid. We also focused in on, we always had a $200 utility deposit to try to cover part of the cost if they didn't pay. We've eliminated that in this proposal because what typically would happen if a renter did not pay, the landlord would be responsible, they would have to pay. If they failed to, then it's put on that property's taxes. So there was no point in having deposits if you want to be able to get your funds in the end anyway. So that's kind of where we was looking at. Fred, do you want to add any thoughts?
Well, I think probably one of the concepts of it was in the process of billing, before it would be filed out, you'd be two months behind, almost by attrition, you know, because you pay after it's, you use it. And then before the termination, maybe you got another 30 days. So we've got 60 days of billing. And we had some landlords that were, and then also, we would try to, within the scope of being reasonable, work with people. And if you do anything, then you're, if you're not careful, you're two and a half to three months behind. And with, then a community that doesn't have natural gas, a lot of people in the cold months will resort to electric heat. And so the, it could very conceivably in one month or two months in the winter months, spike tremendously. And then the complaint from the landlords were that the village essentially was extending credit to the resident, their credit.
Sure.
And that was a major concern.
And landlords were also wanting to know the status of the billing.
Exactly.
Which we could not give unless it was in the landlord's name.
So, and so we did provide a document one time that would allow if the landlord required them to give them that, they could, but, so with that, it came to the streamlining and other communities do this with utilities, Waynesville's not unique. Where we're unique is that we have electric along with water and sewer. But there are communities, Lime, I think even does it with utilities, where they have to stay in the landlord's name. So the council essentially took a position that if ultimately the landlord's responsible and we're being challenged with extending credit, and it was, I was one that even said if it was my recommendation, that if you keep in the property owner's name, then there is no doubt they get the bill, they know what it is. Now, the village also reserves the right that anybody that wants to come in and pay on a bill, they can. So if the landlord chooses to require their tenant to come in and pay that utility, that would be between them. But what it's doing is we're taking that middle person out and we're also trying to streamline so that we're not essentially in the rental business of qualifying who gets it, who doesn't, and collecting in that regard. So I think that was, and if the council wants to speak to the reasons why at this point we're at the second or third meeting, is it, so the logic why they came up, I can't speak to why they chose to do that, but I'm just saying they, these were the arguments that came up.
Right. Yeah, this, well, it's pretty much, you know, that just, as far as the landlord, it just kind of puts that kind of global ballpark as far as, you know, that shuffling that bill around. I don't, is the billing an option to go into the tenant versus landlord? We, we have the ability to email if, you know, most people nowadays do have an email address and, you know, we can email it to the property owner, they can forward it on to their tenant, or, that's one possibility.
You have always there.
Yeah, because if, you know, if you have a landlord who lives out of state or whatever, you know, it could be shuffled through within minutes, you know. And, you know, with trying to reduce the amount of paperwork and everything that an office has to do, you know, emailing and so on has come to be quite efficient for us. Yeah, I see. Apparently the deposit doesn't work with, I mean, you know, there isn't, I mean, you can't play hard dollars and ship it off. Well, typically, you know, we had a $200 deposit and most of the time, the $200 wouldn't cover 60 days worth of usage.
Let me explain that very point. The bill goes out on the, after the first, it's late, delinquent by the 15th, subject to be turned off on the 30th. That's 30 days. And then before it can be implemented, you've got another 30 days.
Is that the law?
Well, the law says that it has to be delinquent 30 days before it can be shut off, technically that way. So it'd be the 15th of the next month.
So yeah, you use deposits and you're not.
And, and, and so we're saying, and we would have landlords come in and really complain about that very thing, the deposit not covered. We, we only mandated $200. The property owner could mandate whatever they wanted.
Sure.
If they made that person come in, put a thousand dollars down, they could, we wouldn't, we wouldn't resist it, but it goes back to ultimately, the landlord is responsible. And I think part of the reason this probably materialized, and I don't have any numbers in front of me, but I would say, I would think it would be safe to say that 90%, and I think it's higher, but 90% of our delinquency issues are rental property. It's not property owners. So that's why we said we're holding property owners' deposits that are never, it never comes into play. So we're saying if it's put into the property owner's name, that's why we're not going to hold the deposit because we have an avenue to collect. So that money's just, you know, not sitting in a coffer for an extended period of time because we've had a lot of property owners that this fell in. The ones that have properties prior to that ordinance, the way I understand, that were grandfathered in, they didn't have to put down a deposit. Everybody after that did. So if you had a house at that time, you didn't have a deposit, but if you moved somewhere else in town, you then had a deposit. We have, we had property owners that had deposits on, on deposit for several years that never come into play for delinquency.
Yeah.
But as far as it been, not many times, like I said, one January, February bill would wipe out a deposit.
About my law there, yeah. Basically, that's what I'm with. So I was just looking at, you know, to where a landlord takes, takes over and, you know, includes it in the rent, then all of a sudden we decide to heat with all electric we've left, propane, you know, that bill is unbearable, you know, especially come winter, you know, from my side anyways. And that happens with a lot of rental property. Right. So it's, that doesn't work for a while there. You know, the billing, the, if an issue there, it'd be nice, you know, to be streamlined and, and work together. I didn't know if there would be any way that if the landlord would, you know, agree under the existing terms and keep it the same, you know, the way, you know, you go 30 days after the delinquency, you know, just the same, you know, say I agree to the, you're going to pay one way or the other, but, you know, we, we know this condition exists and this is what we've had all along and I'll continue with that.
I have a question. Your rental properties, your rent is just for the occupancy then?
Yes, no utilities.
No utilities. You never see the utility bills?
No.
How do you know if there's a problem? If you never see those bills?
They won't know unless you just put on your statute.
I say you wouldn't know. No, I mean, if there's a problem, say in the system, in the heating and cooling system.
Usually we have it to where we can, like you mentioned, be able to have the go-ahead to question as far as anybody that has a utility, you know, whether it be propane or whatever, we have that in the contract, you know, if we need to find out, you know, to ask these questions. A lot of times if we're late on rent, or there's some other issues too, this type, and that would be, you know, something we'd follow up more on too, if we, if we need it, just be checking on certain utilities.
Do you think it would be adversely affect you that if you've got the bill like you do, I don't know if you have any properties where you get the bill now currently, do you live in the village or outside of it? To where it would be a hindrance to forward that? I mean, if you wanted to take the responsibility to have them pay that, if that's in the agreement, you're going to pay the utilities. But what we found is we've become the whipping post for everybody else's business.
Can't win, yeah.
Yeah, you know what I mean? And, and I understand, you know, really, when somebody complains about you're extending my credit.
Right.
Because if when the moment we, the moment we try to work with somebody, then we're basically saying if they don't come forth, you're on the hook for it where landlord says, well, you know, cut off, they just shut it off. Well, I think this actually, it's going to be a new concept, but I think it can actually make everything more efficient. I don't know how far you extend with, when they're late because I have to say that many times I tell property owners when they get upset with the village for any kind of extension, that probably, like you had just alluded to a little bit before that, there's probably some issues with rental in that same, at that same time. And I used to, you know, honestly say, well, if you would have implemented your policy, we may not have this much, basically.
Yeah, it's a, they're not following up with, you know, what they're.
And, but we become, I can't say I've ever had a conversation with you, I never saw you before until today. So, that's a good thing. In that sense, so I commend you for that.
I think basically this situation would take care of, this would make you aware of if the utilities is being shut off, whereas before, if, if it's not in your name, they could be shut off and you wouldn't have any idea that their utilities are being shut off. This way, this would make you aware of, that's what I'm thinking, want to change.
I guess, you know, I guess I try to protect it, you know, I want to know, I guess I, there's usually some evidence in there somewhere that we know something's going on and we're, you know, we don't wait six months down the road, you know, distracting proactive utilities in our building and different things. But I see, you know, the village decide as far as. Well, you know, it's a way, it's a way for us actually to protect the property owners, you know, just like you were saying, if we do a shut off, it may be several days before you would know that it was actually shut off. Meanwhile, now you've got frozen pipes or something, you've got more expense incurred because the renter didn't pay and you had no clue. Right. You know, so what we're trying to do is help the village, help the property owners and the renters, you know, there's good renters that, I mean, they, they pay religiously, they've been here for years, but then we have this turnover renters where Jerry's collecting 200 and putting out 200, collecting, you know, it's just flip-flopping, you know? So it, it all depends on, on what property it is and so on. The, if you email the bill or whatever, how would the landlord know that that's paid? If you email the bill to the tenant?
The landlord.
Goes to the landlord.
So it goes both.
Yeah, you would get that bill.
But if the tenant pays.
You would get the show-off note because it's in your name.
Okay.
Right. And you would.
And you would also get the, the late notice. You'd also get the disconnect notice. I see. So you're cutting that, the tenant out completely then as far as, you see, payment. Yeah, it, yeah. And the, the deposit?
And you could, you would have the deposit if you chose to have deposit, that would be yours.
Right, exactly.
Like you do with it, you have a deposit, I'm assuming, for the facility.
Right. Yeah, I understand that. But as far as what would be required from the landlord? We are not.
We're not going to charge because we have an avenue.
That, that's, that's the thing, you know, we looked at it, if you have several rental properties and we decide to change this and then you pay the deposit, you could have several hundred dollars or a thousand dollars wrapped up in deposits. But since we have an avenue to collect in the end, we don't need that deposit, we don't need to hold that money in our books and it's, it's flip-flopping all the time. So it just cleans up the whole, the whole thing. What about shut off? Say they have not paid electric? Who makes that call?
If they don't, if they don't pay by the, and that's another.
That was what passed last month.
We already did that one? Is that the third one?
That was last month's, your pass.
Okay. I didn't know if we did the final tonight. We had now streamlined it even more, trying to accomplish what you mentioned earlier, that where before the ordinance said that it was mailed on the first, late by the 15th, delinquent by the 15th, and subject to turn on the 30th, the end of the month. We took that out because that's what on my office, somebody coming up saying, well, give me until Friday or the next Friday or two payments. And you, and you know, when you have maybe a renter that's been in a place for several years, you're trying to help that, them and the landlord and everybody out by working with them, but that's still extending the landlord's credit. So what the new policy is, is that it goes out on the first, it's delinquent on 15th as it was, it's subject to be turned off on the 30th, but it won't be because you, it has to be 30 days from the 15th. And from the 30th until the 14th, they can work with them, they can make payments, they can make arrangements or whatever, but on that 15th of that next month, it's done.
And that is by the landlord's say?
No, that's by our say.
But so then the landlord has to be del- delinquent then? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the account's going to be in the landlord's name.
Right. So, but if the landlord wants to keep a good standing and pay it.
Exactly.
Right. But yet the tenant isn't paying. That's what I'm saying.
Right.
But you can also, when you go to court to get your back rent and everything, you can also add it on. Right, but I'm worried about shutting it off.
The shutting off is what council has voted and passed, that on the 15th of the month after.
Right.
That bill, that gets shut off. It's not optional, it's not.
So the landlord doesn't pay it then? If they're not getting it, they don't pay it? And that doesn't reflect on their.
Oh, yeah.
Credit.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah.
So the landlord just can't say shut it off if they're not paying?
I'm not going to get into, I'm not going to give you legal advice, I'm not a lawyer.
No.
I've been told, I've been told that you cannot shut utilities off to, to recover rent.
Right, but before.
I'm not, I'm not an attorney, that's what I've heard.
With this, with the city.
But what our policy's going to be is this, that on the 15th, a month after it's delinquent, it doesn't matter if it's the property owner, the tenant, grandpa, grandma, it's getting shut off.
But in this case, it would be the property owner.
Well, the property owner, and if they want it back on, they'll pay the, the bill in full and the reconnect fee.
But then it reflects on the landlord if the tenant is not paying.
The person they put in their property.
Right. That's crap. I'm sorry. It's crap. The whole town is going to be crap because nobody's going to want to buy properties here. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's not a good deal there.
Why would that not be?
Well, because the landlord can't say shut the electric off. They're going to keep their standing good, their credit good and pay the bill, but they can't say shut it off.
But if that person's not paying their utilities or not paying their rent either, so you would have an eviction process.
I don't, I did.
It's nothing like shutting off electricity in winter.
Well, and here's the other thing, and you got to look at the village as the endpoint. We have no input in who you put in your rental properties.
Right. Yeah, I, I see, I see the process there, it just takes away that.
I mean, you, you can go out and get the most astute and responsible person and never have a problem.
Right.
Or you can put somebody in that manipulates a system, any system, and gets over on a system.
Right.
And they're going to get you and whoever that's involved.
The system, being the, you know, electrical billing process, you know, they have that tool to be able to shut it off and you're taking that tool away from the landlord.
Not really, because if it, because.
They're going to have to not pay.
Again, if it's in your name and you call up and say you want your utilities turned off, that's you.
Right, right.
So, yeah.
It becomes a, like I say, an illegal issue whether or not you can turn it.
I mean, because we don't debate, I have, I have customers call up all the time and say, I need the power turned off of my residence or my property, such and such address. They may be doing remodeling, they may be doing enhancements, they may be doing a multitude of things. We don't judge and determine that call. We just comply with the work order.
Right, okay.
And so I'm just saying, you know, I'm not reading anything into that or anything out of that.
Yeah, I understand.
But I'm just saying, all we are is providing utilities.
Right.
And what it's turned into is we've been accused and challenged and beat up for being extending other people's personal credit. You know, you're talking about your credit if it gets shut off, but what about your credit if we extend perceivably thousand, a couple thousand dollars worth of winter months of utilities, they walk and if you don't pay it, it gets put on your taxes. So how's that not affect you?
Right, yeah, I understand.
So either way, it still comes back to a moot point.
Yeah. I guess, yeah, I see the point, you know, in the position, I guess, of, you know, the original question of.
That's the logic.
Right.
And, and I'm just trying to answer the questions, but you can talk to them about yea nay or, you know, I'm just saying that's kind of how we got to where we're at.
Right. Like I say, would it be an absolute or would there be an option for a landlord to say, keep it the same, understand the liabilities, understand the, I guess, the possibility of the expense there? Do you want to? Well, we've got it worked out with, with this ordinance that we're leaving the tenant and landlord, it's up to them how they work out the payment. All we're saying is just like any other utility, just like your phone, if you don't pay it, definitely shut it off. You know, that, we're just trying to simplify for everybody. And like you say, if the property owner is responsible for it in the end, nothing changes, only how it gets there. Yeah, that eliminates, like I say, the deposit on your end for rentals. Right. Yeah. And that's across the board for any property owner, but they don't have the law of you have to pay the utilities like a landlord. Correct. As a property owner? Excuse me? Um, I have a tenant don't pay the electric bill, I'm liable as a landlord. A property owner, it's not necessary to, you know, they can go on their way.
No, because the property's in their name.
Right.
It goes on their taxes.
Yeah.
So whatever happens, the village will get their money, the same process works for them. The same, the same process, whether you allow somebody to live in your property or whether you live in the property, it's exactly the same.
Right, yeah, you have the tax.
And that's why we're saying, why should we hold a deposit? I, I had one landlord say, well, if you do that, I won't be able to rent my property. And I'm saying, why is that? Because it doesn't matter whether you collect the utilities and the rent, it's still the same amount of money. So if you're saying because you can rent it for this amount and the utilities is an unknown, it's going to change the person? See, that's what I'm saying. So it's still the same.
Oh, yeah.
And if it was me, I would consider raising the, the deposit because in the past, they've always paid the deposit for the utility, separate from the residence. I mean, you still have that option.
Right.
To put them two together and that, you know, it, it's like the housing market a few years ago, putting people in properties they shouldn't have and they failed, you know, the rentals no different.
Right, right.
You can pay the deposit and you can get in the door, but can you really afford it?
Oh, yeah.
And, and, you know, we got into the business, we're not the qualifier, we're just.
Yeah, we ended up with a mess, I'm sure, in the situation. I just, you know, trying to look at it, you know. We spent a lot of time trying to work with people on their utilities. Sure. And most of the time, we get it worked out. We used to have a disconnect list, very long. Now it's very short. But through the years, we've tried to get it to where we've streamlined it, we've made it, this, this is matter of fact, this is what's going to happen, you know. And most people, oh, okay, I get it now. When it's due on the 15th, I think I'll go ahead and pay it, you know. You know, we had, you know, just like taking credit cards and so on, we used to never do that. Now we do. Yes, there is a convenience fee. But I had this discussion a little while ago. If, if you're out of town and, oh, I forgot to pay my utility bill. Oh, I don't want to pay that convenience fee. Would you rather pay the 10% penalty for being late? So it's either 3% or 10%. I mean, you have a choice. But maybe that's what we'll have to go to. But no, I, I see, you know, the.
And if we can assist in the sense of, like I said, sending out an email, I don't know as we work towards it, if it goes finalized to where with an email that that renter can get it at the same way you're getting it.
Right.
And then you have an agreement that says you will pay that. We're not going to deny the funds if they come in. But what we're saying is the bill's going to go to you on the 15th. If it's not paid a month after, it will be disconnected. You would know that in advance because you would get those notices. You know what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
And so.
Yeah, the billing was, you know, one of the biggest questions, I would say, I just, it's more for the landlord to.
Because I, I, I fully anticipate there's going to be landlords that will tell their tenant when they come, come on board or, or existing ones will say, you're going to pay the utilities, I want to know if you do or not.
Right.
And when they come in, we're going to accept payment for that location and give them a receipt and credit to account. But what that does is it takes the village out of the position of extending your credit.
Right.
Which, you know, when that was argued, I mean, it was kind of hard to say, that's not true. You know, once we negotiate in any capacity, even though it's keeping somebody that's a good tenant in there for you to keep things going, is it the right thing to do?
Question. Have you considered rental, including the utilities?
Yes, you know, that's, there again, you know, we have the propane winters, the biggest issue. When you eliminate, when the electric would be included, we could start hitting with electric instead of propane, you know, in the winter.
Is it possible to consider, one thing we provide to any of our landlords, any property owners, you can come in and we can give you a 12-month average of your property. You can do the calculations.
Try to go with an average.